I'm Jennifer McMahon, Chief Operating Officer here with the city. Welcome to the District 3 Town Hall. I believe this is the third District 3 Town Hall that we've started about three years ago to do these for each of the districts. So we focus a lot that's particular to your district, but will also go citywide on some things that are happening. So before we kind of get into the agenda, I want to introduce Betty, our District 3 Commissioner, and she can do a little introduction and a welcome too.
Hi, well, thank you for coming out. It is a very important meeting for me because it's a chance for collective neighborhoods to come together. I know I've gone out to some neighborhood association meetings. So I've heard things throughout our district, but I think it's also important for us to hear what goes on throughout our whole district. I know we hear about our city, there's a lot of similarities just around, you know, so we have a chance to talk about it. We do have an agenda, so hopefully we can grab an agenda mostly because I want the city to be able to give an update on what's going on currently specifically to our district. And I want to be able to give enough time towards the end, or I'll say as not the end of the meeting, but enough ample time to be able to have you all voice either from what we've heard from tonight or anything that I might not be aware of, what's going on in your neighborhood or your area. So later I could get the answer today, but I'll let you in your future. So, so thank you for that and I'll turn it over so that we can try to get to the thing that we really want to talk about.
And we are also Zoom, so there may be questions that pop up on this end too as well. So redevelopment, I just wanted to do an overview of what's kind of happening in the city. Gentlemen that I saw at the library just a little bit ago, even in the white shirt, you're right, John, is that what your name is? So we did receive an application, we had a community meeting recently for the Miramar Hotel. They were approved for a CUP a few years ago. They have redesigned what they wanted to do, far less of a project. They're keeping some of the old, the two-story building and building, six-story building structure towards the back of their property, but they're kind of blending the old and the new with the new project. They have submitted the paperwork to start the clock, so to speak, for the six months to get the CUP through to the commission. So another hotel, the Postcard Inn, also had their community meeting recently. They will be developing the part of their parcel that they own that is empty right now where they kind of do some parking. It's behind where Slice and that strip mall, but that, that strip of businesses, they own that strip plus what's behind there. They want to develop that into a three-story garage and then a couple floors with some additional hotel rooms. That meeting took place, we have not received their application, but that was about a week and a half ago. I know in particular to this district, Windward Pass had their community meeting as well. We have not heard from them, we've reached out to them, nor have we received an application to start the process. So I don't have an update on that and whatever progression is happening with that, if any of these does progress with that. So I know that, that in particular for this district, that was one on there. Wind Dixie, we do have a meeting with them tomorrow. I don't know what the meeting will entail or what's, what they're trying to do, but I'm hoping something happens with that Wind Dixie property so that hopefully we can update you if it's something to describe with the community as we go through that. The east end of Quarry here, there is a new buyer for that property. We are currently working with them to go through some environmental things that we had addressed with the previous buyer. We're just trying to close that loop in order, or potentially for them to actually start a process to purchase the property and go through what it is that they're requesting. So that's kind of happening within that. The commission in the last few months did approve a conditional use permit for the Trade Winds development and the Sarada development. There hasn't been any additional movement from either one of those projects that the city can report on. And, and so that's what's happening with those other developments in the city. I don't, unless anybody has a property or anything that you've heard or have questions on and be happy to answer. I think I'm covering kind of the big ones. Yes, Robson's on property at Vito, because he would check out, he has like maybe six more weeks till the sixth month or so. When his actual wall, so the additional permit on the property. I've not got anything additional from Robson's. The days of that property, the Nels County is redoing the water. Yep, we had our TRCs regarding that today, but there has been nothing in regards to the adjacent properties. The next on the agenda, Mr. Mike Clark, I think you've got the next three items here. So it's the electrical underground happening on Boulevard.
Electrical, oh wait, sorry. For those of you who I have not had a play to meet yet, my name is Mike Clark. I serve as your Public Works Director for this wonderful St. Pete's City that we have. Great to see everybody here. I've been in the job now just shy of eight years and I live in the city with you and I experience all of the issues we're going to talk about as many of you experienced them. So the electrical undergrounding of Gulf Boulevard has been a project in making for quite some time. Recall back, the county allocated Penny Port Pinellas tax funds, Penny four, Penny five, thirty-nine million dollars or something like that to all of the cities along the area from Clearwater down to us. And the money was divvied up in accordance to how many millions feet you have on Gulf Boulevard. It was a beautification pocket, so the cities could choose to use that money for Gulf Boulevard beautification. Most of the cities chose to underground the overhead electrical communication wire systems. A couple of the cities had already done that on their own and so they did some other things. So we have been working on this project now since about 2015. And phase one, construction is complete with the exception of a couple of streetlights that we have to dance around with here as final change order. Phase two, we're having conversations as we do our budget right now about where the funding is for phase two so that we can bring phase two construction to the commission for approval at some point in the near future, in the near future, I hope. The design is already complete. And then there is a phase three that's out there. Phase three is, well, phase one was seventy-fifth to fifty-fifth, phase two is fifty-fifth to forty-fifth, phase three is forty-fifth to thirty-fifth. Phase three is not yet in design and we do not yet know where the funding will come from or where in the future we're going to place that project in capital program. So that's it, that's it. That's all I have, so you raise your hand first.
So you're saying phase two is designed, but all the penny for Pinellas money is gone, so there's no money for the phase two implementation?
No, that's not what I said.
That's why I clarified.
I said, we're discussing the funding for phase two to make sure that everything is all lined up with the budget. And then we'll be bringing that to the commission here shortly, I hope. There is funding for the construction, it is paying for Pinellas. From those parts, I think there is some city aspects to it for some add-ons that we might have done, but it's not significant in terms of the project.
Yeah, the second lighting that isn't lighting up at night right now is that. Streetlights along Gulf.
If the streetlight is a nice white pole and it's new and it's not off, it's not energized yet. And it will not be energized until the entire project is stripped out and all of the adjacent properties are energized at the same time. So that's coming. The schedule is completion and everything turned on by Christmas.
That's still phase one?
That's still phase one. So once we did our part, we, and our part was putting in the conduit and the concrete paths and locating the pedestals and all the drilling that you all suffered through the detours. Duke Energy comes in and basically runs wire through the conduit, hooks up the new equipment and then energizes the equipment and then strips off the old wires and then takes down the old poles. So that process is going to be taken on for.
Yeah, especially there's a whole second that has no lights, no lights at nighttime. Right now, there are no lights for, if Postcard Inn or long section, there are no streetlights lighting up at night.
I was not aware of that, so I'll give, I'll give Duke a call and see what they're up to. They may have thrown a transformer switch someplace while they were working on something else. But it's not uncommon, my crew will show up and begin the work and then they transition over to another crew and they forgot to say, hey, by the way, I turned the switch off over there. It happens on the water system also, so appreciate that, so we'll do that. Yes, ma'am.
Mike, and that was the research product, but with phase three wasn't always planned to be something that was out of the budget to complete. It sounded like that's what they were saying, we don't know where it's coming.
Well, we're just looking at where we're going to program that money as it's spaced out. We wouldn't begin that project for another two years at this point now. So during the budget build this year, we'll be looking at where does that program fit in the future years?
Maybe a clarification, the penny for Pinellas money is in a bucket somewhere? We're just taking it out of that as we progress, is what we're doing?
As I understand the finances, yes. Tax receipts come in quarterly and then are distributed out to the cities as, as we expense. So it's a bucket of money sitting over there. You throw money into it and keep pulling money out. All right, so the next item on the agenda is the maintenance of the infrastructure in the Maritime neighborhood. And so I'll just make this short and sweet and easy for you. The tie check valves are in an environment that they were not necessarily best designed for. And they may work in some storm situations and they may be clogged and they may not work in some storm situations. There's no way for me to keep track of that and there's no way for me to know that. Your observations are as good as mine. And my observation is that while we installed those tie check valves in good faith, believing that they would do what we were told they would do, and under the best of circumstances, they do what they're supposed to do, but they're not reliable where they are. And so we are a learning organization as we should be. And our lesson learned is if the environment that you're using, the tie check valve in doesn't work, then change the environment. And there's two pieces to that. One is the marine growth, which just launches right out. I mean, you put that thing in the end of the tunnel, at the outfall structure, you see the oysters tomorrow. And then the other is debris, debris is two different types really. One are the large pieces of debris, say a palm fronds and soda bottles and pop wrappers and whatever else you, people throw on the street and washes into the storm system. But then there's, then there's the granular debris that naturally rolls off the street, the sand particles that naturally blow around and other little small granular objects that find their way into the pipe and they wash through, but they don't wash completely through. It's on the bottom of the pipe, it's not uncommon to see silitation begin to build up. And so as it builds up, the flat valve can't seat down properly onto the concrete pipe itself and therefore there's leakage underneath it because of the accumulation of debris. So we are not staffed, nor are we capable of keeping up with maintenance on, on all of these tie check, tie check valves. And I'm not even going to try it, so don't ask me to maintain it anymore because we're not going to do that. They don't work and if I maintain them tomorrow, they might not work on Thursday. And so the effort that it would take would consume everything that we have and more. And that we just don't have that resource. So what do you got here? All right, we are in design for an alternative process. So if we have debris, let's think about how do we remove the debris? The best removal for debris that we have out there in the industry is called a baffle box. And the way the baffle box works is the water flows in, one side goes into a chamber which is called the baffle. Florals are straight off the top on the stream and then the sediments will fall down. The water will build up and flow into the second chamber, do the same thing with the sediments. It slows the water down so the sediments have a chance to fall out. By the time it rolls through the third chamber, most of those sediments that would hold that tie check valve are not, are not, remain suspended in water that have settled to the bottom of the baffle box. And then clean debris-free water is flowing out. And through the repositioned check valve, so we're going to take the check valve off of the outfall structures where they're exposed to sunlight and the marine growth aggressiveness. We're going to pull them all the way back into the street. And so we're going to deprive any organism from sunlight and nutrition, so hopefully they won't grow. In addition to that, because there's no, you know, you can never bet on that, we're going to put the tie check valves, we're going to have manufacturers actually install them into a short stick of pipe about six feet. And so that maintains our warranty. And we're going to vault that six-foot section into a hatch vault, so our guys will be able to go in, open up the hatch. The stick of pipe will be on a cradle down in the vault. We'll have quick disconnects on both sides so they can be, and lug lifts. So that guy, we'll take the crane truck, hit the quick disconnects, grab the lug lifts, bring the piece, bring the piece of pipe up to the ground level so they can see it, inspect the tie check valve flap, go ahead and maintain it. Then you get down to the vault, they can take a look at the entrance to the baffle box, make sure the baffle box is doing okay. And then you put it all back together again. And that process is not going to take nearly as much time or effort as what we're currently facing. And so the design of that is well underway. I have shared that design with all of the other public works directors in the county, at the county public works director meeting. And I'm being asked about it for others. And we'll be asking approval of the commission to go ahead and begin a transformation of these tie check valve structures coming up here.
I apologize, I did a couple of things.
That's okay.
Is this similar to Bogus Siega Isle, the flooding we have this time now? The construction we had a few years ago and experiencing the flooding on island, is this the same?
So Bogus Siega Isle, like across the bridge on the island or? So you'd have to cross the bridge? Yes, yes, yes.
So that what you're discussing is, well, you're going to take care of our island?
Yes, so there's one on your island.
Yes, I remember.
There you go, yes.
Almost here, construction.
I know, that's, that's a, that's a very difficult position that we have in that inlet structure because it's very shallow. We don't have a lot of vertical structure, vertical distance to work with here, so it's extremely difficult. But we're working. There are also, for anybody that lives in Bell Vista, there's one, there are two on Bell Vista Drive. And we have five north of Twenty-first Avenue on Passer Road avenue. And so we're looking at projects to retrofit for all of those locations. You're not going to see all of those on tonight's briefing page, but we're working that back in my office.
Okay, Bogus Siega Isle, you have one valve, one of those valves at the lowest end of the island. When we had flooding, the last time we had flooding, I think you had projected that you wanted to have a four-foot level for resiliency. Just another, I've seen other, what are your resiliency presentations? Well, that went down in the end where, but when the water level came, it did not come above four foot, probably about three and a half foot. It came in another.
Another valve?
Another outfall that doesn't have a valve on it, properly ran downhill to their end of the island.
That was April eleventh, just the rain.
It wasn't rainfall, this was, this was high water, just no rain, no rain, high water, sunny day, flood. You didn't do anything to increase the number?
It's not going to matter because the one that doesn't have anything is eating water down the island.
Right now, they are as they were before we touched them, they're free-flowing structures. West the tie check valve just happens to work because of the debris's not there and it's good. And it will stay that way through the rest of its hurricane season. We're not going to be doing any construction anywhere until the fall.
I understand now, what I'm saying is I don't believe this would ever happen.
You are correct, we did not install tie check valves further, further.
One of the middle river parks.
To the west of the park, yeah, we did not do that.
That's where the water was coming up and running down.
Water will sink its level, yes it will.
And it was not at four foot, it was low.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly where the force beach issue is.
He was doing one of your resiliency presentations.
Lots of numbers in those presentations, but so there's a little misunderstanding about the tie check valve also. It is a rubberized piece of equipment. And so if it does work properly, it sits here and the tide rises and the tie check valve closes and then it rains and there's water behind it and then the tide lowers. Well, the tide has to go all the way down past the tie check valve opening in order to allow head water, rainwater to have enough pressure, head pressure to push through it. It does take some PSI, so there's that. And one more question in back and then we should probably move on.
My question is, are you going to take out those check valves in the Maritime, in the Doncesar neighborhood? So if the water can flow back out of the neighborhood once it comes in?
The water will always flow back out, there's nothing about the debris. Well, I just explained that tide has to fall down.
But that, that pipe actually sits lower than the low tide. In the, the Doncesar, the Fearsome Bay or whatever it's called.
Yeah.
Those, those pipes actually sit lower than low tide. You know, so why it takes a long time for that water to drain back up once it comes into the neighborhood. So if you took the valve off, wouldn't that allow the water to come out faster?
It would be, it would be a free-flow situation, yes.
It would be like what we had before we were heads.
That's correct, but.
I never flooded, but we had that.
I'm, I'm, I'm happy to pursue that if everybody here would like to, the check valves completely removed and just make it a free-flow situation again. I don't particularly agree with your analysis, but that doesn't mean it's not correct in your view, so.
I'm just saying, it seems like that, I don't know, I'm not.
Well, exactly, we're making observations here and without the knowledge of, the precise knowledge of what that flat valve is actually doing down there. Is it really stuck in debris? Is it really blocking it open? How far is low tide from the bottom of the pipe? Generally, if the tide is at the bottom of the pipe, that, that valve is going to flow. And if there's a foot of water behind it, that water is going to evacuate through it.
That's what I'm saying, Mike, those pipes look like they're lower than what low tide is. So it's constantly under the water.
I don't disagree, so I'm happy to take a look at that.
I mean, if anybody else is seeing something different, you know, I think we've all seen the same flooding that you've seen in the presentation. I'd be curious, you know, you see other projects going down all over the city, especially Seawall down there, Passer Road.
What makes you think you put it to the bottom of the list?
Because it's still happening. There's that check valve from Miami from our, our city manager. Then we've flushed several times since then. We're putting the following, new construction, sea walls down in Passer Road are actively being handled. And you're saying like, well, I mean, soon we will be.
So I truly appreciate that observation and I would like to expand on that a little bit, if you'd allow me to, on timing. So timing is, it's something that we have to work through as a schedule. Everybody knows what schedules are. So from the time that Public Works says, you know what, we need to do this project. And then I have to think about that project and kind of get some scoping and what is it going to accomplish? Should we get some design going on? Then I got to get it into a budget. Well, that only happens once a year and we're doing the budget now to start in October. So if I'm thinking about this project now, I can't even get the budget to begin conception of design until October. That'll take a year. Then I've got to go through procurement and that'll take four to five months, so that's a year and a half. And then the construction will start and that'll take another year. Passer Road Seawall started forty-five years ago and we're just now getting ready to complete construction in two months. So it just doesn't happen. These projects are on the books for years before, before you see anything on the, on the street at all. And that's the same way with all these tie check valves. So everything that I'm talking about is, some of them are in design now, some of them I'm going to request the design to start soon. And then, and then I'll have to come back and I'll have to request construction. And all of that time, that, that calendar of events is, it pushes me into the winter. And that's why I can't, I can't move any faster than that. That's the way our government financial system procurement is structured. And it's there for good reasons, to protect our tax dollars from being misused and misspent. I am, I am checked at every step of the way. I'm questioned, Mike, what's the purpose of this thing? What's it going to do? Why is it costing much? Can you cost, can, can bring the cost down? Can you do it a different way? And that's a, that's a three-wheeling conversation that should take place and does. We get challenged all the time. It is a, it is a very rare occasion that Mike Clark's bright idea actually survives brutal battle of conversation and comes through to the end intact. Usually we're talking about, everybody's got these great ideas. And so the good ideas structure takes place and, and we have that time and that's, that's what comes out on the side. So I can't move any faster than I, than I'm trying to move now. And so that's, that's our process.
It's been going on for years, you had the same meeting four years ago and there wasn't planning. It was a very extensive plan, but this has been going, we've been having these meetings for over four years. So to say that the other project was four years ago, well, then we should be right there because this goes back, this isn't just a year or two. We've had the same conversation for four, five, six years. I mean, those check valves were put in because of the conversation we had that many years ago before.
Yeah, that was action.
Yeah. Right, and it, and now we have the dry work.
Now we know more.
But we know sea walls need to be, it needs to be a cohesive.
Well, so if everybody's okay with the maintenance conversation, I think the gentleman just gave me a great transition into the next stage. He said, do you have a question, sir?
Yes, are they, and I'm like, you might have said this, my, are there any existing three baffle boxes system in existence now and is functioning and working?
Yes.
And where are they?
They're between Fourth Avenue and Twelfth Avenue on Passer Road Way. All of those baffle box check valve systems work. And they work because we pulled those valves back off the wall. They're not hanging on the wall for the oysters to chew on. They're back in a marine environment that shows, that prevents the growth. And they're protected by the baffle box for debris. So Passer Grill doesn't flood except in the most rare of circumstances, but the tie check valves have held.
Now you want to move on, but I just, you're bringing up some helpful ways to look at what you're up against. So I just wanted to try to understand, so what is in budget for the, like I published, you know, October third, twenty twenty-three for fiscal year, I think about twenty-four. Right?
We're in twenty-four now.
Right, so those projects that were published by the city manager, October third of last year, like what is? One example would be, and I'm trying to relate it to what you're saying, so retrofit of existing stormwater check valves to new performance in Doncesar neighborhood. That was in budget for this year. And what you're saying now, maybe that's not what you think we should spend money on or do? Just could you use that as a good example of how we think about it?
Let me try to respond this way. At the second. Let me try to respond this way, um, at the second budget reading for this year, last September, uh, you saw a reappropriation of over seven hundred thousand dollars from other projects into what the city manager created a resiliency fund. That fund did not have any restrictions other than do resiliency projects, Mike, as a rider that boss. And so most of what you're seeing on that page today is a result of that action.
Okay, so what you just said though about the check valves, that you don't wanna touch them anymore, or whatever, I don't care, I'm sorry, I put words in your mouth. But would that mean your retrofit of those existing check water valves, or the installation of new, new stormwater check valves in the Donce's our neighborhood? Are those two bullets, are those projects that are gonna happen, or you're saying no?
No, those projects are within the funding limits of that initial allocation of seven fifty thousand dollars.
And that's happening this, in this fiscal year, or you're saying a couple of years in the next four years?
If you read, yeah, if you read the fine print, I, at the very bottom of each of those boxes, and I'll go through each of these boxes, I described where, where we are in the process. And so, you know, would like, I'll go ahead and start to swing around the clock on that piece of paper and we'll hit it one by one, is that okay with everybody?
Okay.
So, um, uh, let's, uh, let's start at the upper right-hand corner, just because it's clockwise. Well. So, uh, let me, so before I start with this one, let me go back to the upper left-hand corner as the base. So, uh, yeah, many of you may recall that we did a water threats analysis for the neighborhood three or four years ago. And we came up with a concept design that we would push all the water in the last little park, we'd have ginormous pump stations and push them out to the exterior perimeter. And we remember that? Okay, well, in that learning environment, we challenged ourselves and says, is that really the smartest thing to do? We had two years of time to, to retroreflect on this thing. And then we came up and said, no, not really, we can cut that project cost down considerably if we put the pumps on the exterior perimeter and not have as many pumps and make them smaller. And so the results of that study is, is a six-pump configuration that are placed on the outfalls around the perimeter of the Donce's our neighborhood. And, uh, any further activity, so there's, that was phase two. Okay, so phase one was Glazero Park, phase two was Proter. There could be a phase three, and that's largely dependent on us, you, the commissioner. Um, as to whether or not you wanna have a phase three conversation, and the phase three conversation is are we going to figure out a way to elevate the sea walls of that neighborhood to five feet? Because if we do not, then pump stations will not take place, there's no sense in building a pump station if we can't protect the walls, so that's where we're at, that, that's the conversation. So we're split to that, preparing, preparing for a positive outcome. The project in the upper right-hand corner is a thirty percent concept design. So we're going to retrofit those structures with the baffle boxes and, and the tide check valves I just talked about. But if we build a pump station at that location at some point in the future, I wanna make sure that that pump is going to spadally fit in the footprint of that area. Okay, so this design at thirty percent is going to make sure that as we move forward in construction now, we are positioned for success later. We're, we're thinking five years, ten years in advance.
So it could work, your, the plan would be to incorporate it into the system, the baffle system, where we're in conjunction with it?
Bingo, you got it.
Could it otherwise be one or the other?
Yes. So, that's that project, and it's a long, long-range thinking, preparatory, don't, don't, you know, put something in and it's money to take it out, because you're about to take it out. I'm not gonna win one hundred percent of the time on forward thinking, you know, but I'm gonna give it my best shot, and then if y'all have some ideas, I'm all ears.
And you just think phase two, phase three, you're not saying you're executing the one or phase two, you're saying we're just, we're shifting it to a three dot O strategy instead of what, two or one, what's that one here?
Yeah, it's not necessarily an execution, these are concept designs.
Yeah.
So the concept design, the first one, we thought, pretty good, but we can do better. Concept design number two, hey, I think we got something better here. If and when we ever go to concept design number three, we will refine concept number two based on what we've learned and however long it takes and incorporate lessons learned in that one as we go to final design. So, these are all conceptual phases that get us to a point where we can actually execute construction. But they don't by themselves cause any physical movement.
Where can we see, where can we see how much money and time it's allocated to these conceptual designs?
Um, fifteen thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars.
That's the design.
I put, I put numbers down for every project that I have. Because I thought, you know, it might be curious, since we're in the tax dollars you're going.
I have just a quick question, so last year you met with Army Corps of Engineers and individuals who have dealt with flooding, even in foreign countries that came here, was there any results for us to try new concepts for flooding?
It was the Dutch.
Yeah.
Yeah, the Dutch came to visit, and they largely reinforced the direction that we're going, uh, with a whole bunch of pretty pictures. Uh, and so we, we appreciated that, that was, that was a wonderful one, we've experienced brainstorming with, with that bunches, and, uh. So that's, that's where that went, and so, as far as I can tell, the entire industry of public works directors, so to speak, we are all learning parallel to each other right now. And, uh, the county, uh, the county public works director, Kelly Levy, gets us all together once a quarter. And we share what we're doing, we co-comiserate, so to speak. Tide check valves aren't working, hey, try this, or whatever it is, we'll talk about garbage and trash and pipes and water and all that stuff. But when I, when I came up with the idea that we would vault the tide check valves in a stick of pipe on a quick release valve with lug nuts that could bring to the surface and allow the guys to do the maintenance, everybody had an aha moment, and the design firm actually asked me if I wanted to patent that idea. I'm a public official, so I can't. So it's free, anybody can have it.
So what they did in Fort Lauderdale, I think they could channel a lot of their fluid. I think that would be an example of all of Florida, and they lived in Miami as well, Fort Lauderdale did a good job.
There are all kinds of options available, a lot of which we're not using because of our topography, that other cities can avail themselves of. So Fort Lauderdale's topography is much different than ours, it has some similarities, all, but we're a barrier island. Not a whole lot of us hanging out on Florida coast, there's, you know, a couple of dozen maybe. And so that makes us different, the highest point on the island, I think, is the Viper. Uh, so, I mean, take a look at sea level rise, go to Noah. Go to Noah, hit sea level rise tracker, play with the toggle switch, hit four feet, three feet by the year twenty seventy-five. And think to yourself, do we really have, how much time do we really have to start getting in gear here, folks? Phase three conversation needs to start happening.
And you go back, phase three, the talk about is the seawall, elevating the seawall?
Correct.
So all these other ones that we're talking about, if you can't do phase three, you're not gonna do phase.
So we'll, we'll continue on, I'll answer the questions individually, but to the projects, alright. So the project is outlined in green, that means we got free money. Not hundred percent free money, but we got free money, OPM, other people's money, we love other people's money, we love grants. And so the, the next one down, uh, is a five thousand foot long living shoreline concept design that, uh, we are partnered up with the Echosphere Restoration Institute. We did a grant match with them for the design and construction, they're managing it, we're just, I'm just along for the ride, I'm learning. Uh, the reason I advocated for a city match on a private project was because when this design is over with, the city will own it. Or co, but I will be able to access all of the knowledge that we're going to create as we push through this design. And I will be able to extend that knowledge to every other property owner, not just in your neighborhood, but others. And so I think that's a pretty good investment of knowledge in the future. Uh, thirty to sixty percent, someplace in there, I haven't talked to the project manager in a couple of weeks, um, but it's, it's cruising along. The next one, um, the two locations, project F and F, that's Granada and uh. Barcelona. Uh, those two projects are, uh, belong to the Department of Transportation, FDOT. Uh, they have finished their design, they actually were using concepts of what we are doing, they, they could not afford to do full blast. But they're pulling the tide check valve back off the seawalls where they don't function, they're putting them behind a baffle box and they're, they're, they're not vaulting much to my chagrin, uh, but that's their maintenance challenge to, to hang tight with, uh, but they are gonna pull us back, and I do think that they will. They hold true to their word, last week I got an update, they, they're looking to be in construction in August. So that's good news there.
Are they in the pump system?
They're not. This is baffle box tide check valve. Um, and they're doing it under a, uh, what they, they have a fast track program, and that program has a, a monetary limit. And so they had to kind of squeeze this project right down underneath that threshold so they could keep it moving on a fast track, you know, pre-selected construction design type of, uh, project, rather than going through a full, full board design, adding it to this five-year CIP of the FDAT and waiting until the year twenty thirty-two to build it, so I'm gonna thank them for their efforts for now.
But you said they're not gonna use that same without thing?
No, they're just gonna go ahead and put it inside of a large manhole.
Why wouldn't they do the same thing in contract?
They had to push that number down to stay underneath their threshold so they can get the construction executed. And the tide check valve is as far out back off the seawall that, behind a baffle box for debris, I think we're gonna be okay, time will tell. But, uh, let's see here, the, the Donce's our Boat Rad, what a great topic to talk about, let's not talk about it, because we'll talk about it on May twenty-ninth, I hope to see you all there, moving on. Uh, we did have two tide check valves that we thumb wrestled with the manufacturer about a long time ago, a year or so, and they were replaced under warranty, but they're suffering the same conditions as all the others, so it really wasn't a warranty issue that they're, they were not installed quite properly, and they had the challenges other than just debris, so we, we called them, they came out at the cost and replaced the two of them. And then the last one, I just thought I'd throw in the fact that if anybody's in love with the Don Vista building, that's a new roof and some new HVAC. Yeah, so that project's hanging out there. Um, I'm gonna go back up to the top and head to the left. Um, and I'm gonna kind of talk about the two at the top at the same time. And locations two, four, five, six, and eight, those are the locations that the tide check valves were installed and the debate, you know, continues about their effectiveness. And those, that's where the restructure is gonna take place that I talked about. We did not install tide check valves at locations one, three, and seven. So we're gonna go back and do that, and we're gonna do that with the new design concepts that we have, so those two projects are moving forward parallel to each other. Um, we talked about, uh, the maritime water threats, we talked about phase three. Um, the replacement of the seawall location at nine, at Thirty-Sixth Avenue Terminus, that entire neighborhood, uh, is the subject of flooding, uh, high tides, and it's getting, eh, it's a pain. And, uh, so, uh, our seawall project, we're at one hundred percent design, it is in with the state for permitting. The nice thing about the design is it doesn't need an extensive permit, because you're not reaching out into the waters as far as we wanted to, we pulled back to the face of the seawall. And so by pulling back out of the waters and not encroaching, so at the edge of the seawall, we had, we had ideas to do living shoreline, oysters and mangroves and stuff out, up the water. The state administrated code said, no, you're not gonna do that. You can debate with us until cows come home, but you're not, no, you're not gonna do it, yes, I understand, we'll pull back. And we're going through a different, more expedient permitting process, I hope it doesn't take more than two months, uh, but they don't give you an answer when you ask. So that's where that project is at right now. Uh, not having faith and confidence that I can actually build that structure during this hurricane season, and knowing full well the danger it poses to the neighborhood, I am going to bring forward to the commission for approval at the next meeting a temporary structural solution that I talked about with, uh, our pipe sys- systems contractor. And you can see the cost there on that one. And basically, it's a seawall in front of the seawall that's connected and bonded so that we basically, uh, close up all of the, all of the holes and breaks that are in that seawall, if anybody's watched it, it just flows through. We're just gonna put an eighteen-inch wide, five-foot thick structure in front of the existing structure, when it comes time to rebuild the whole thing, we'll just rip it back, I think. Yes, sir.
Excuse me, that's, uh, I guess spending eight hundred thousand dollars on a temporary fix?
No, there's, there's a separate project for the temporary fix. It's down below it, stuck to the bottom. Thirty-six thousand.
How many money are you, you can follow that.
Uh, fifty foot right. But the elevations and the storm water management in that intersection are unique. There is an FDOT storm pipe that's thirty-six inches in diameter, gathers the water on Gulf Boulevard in El Centro across the street. And that flows down through there underneath the surface drainage that we have in the neighborhood itself. And so we have to figure out, how do we reconfigure the street elevation system to install new inlets so that the water will flow differently back around through the baffle box and, and to check valves? So most of the cost of that project is not necessarily the seawall itself, it's the configuration of the storm water management, excuse me, uh, that has to take place in order for that system to work.
I've got a question about that, uh, seawall, uh, the number nine area.
Okay.
Two questions, one, what is the height of that seawall? And two, what makes that any different than the Maritana neighborhood in front of the street? I mean, this is what you're saying, that we're having such a hard time figuring out, but it sounds like you've got it figured out over here, so why, why aren't we in the same base?
Well, first question, everything that we're going to do and everything that you would do as a private property owner will be at five feet. And so we're going to five feet, and it will be about a foot and a half to two feet taller than the ones on either side, and I've already talked about both of those areas. Um, second question is, what makes this one different than Maritime? It's owned by the city. It's ours. And, uh, so we have, I think we have about fifty-four city-owned seawall structures, you know, across the city, pass road, horses, loggers, but there's, they're all over the place. Every street end park, you see, that's, if, if there's a dead end that goes to the water, uh, on the street, there's a seawall there, that's ours. And, uh, two years ago, uh, we char-, uh, we commissioned for a seawall maintenance replacement master plan, um, and, you know, so I've been going off of that master plan for, you know, how to maintain these walls and how to allocate in the budget that I have to decide here next week. And so trying to, you know, advocate for those funds to take care of that structure, of all those structures, so. Um, yes, sir.
Yeah, well, you, you talk about the water that runs from El Centro underground to Thirty-Sixth Avenue. Uh, you're talking about the inlets that are at the corner of Thirty-Sixth and Gulf, right? Because the, uh, basins in the middle of El Centro are just huge bases, they all go in, is that true?
The basins in the middle of El Centro are what's called, uh, French drains, and they were installed some, sometime before I showed up, and, uh, a French drain is a structure, basically you would excavate a hole in the ground, you throw a bunch of rock into it, and then you cover the top up and water flows into it. Um, it's a, it's a volumetric void that rainwater can flow into. In our environment, have a lot of sand, and over a course of a couple of years, the, the voids between the rocks, they all fill up with sand and debris and whatever else, and they become non-functional. So the amount of maintenance that requires to install those things or keep up after those things, we, we have cleaned them out several times since I've been here, but every time the same thing happens again. So the last project on the left-hand side, I hope is going to address the El Centro, uh, drainage problem. Has anybody been down Bay Street lately, um, over here? So if you go down Gulf Wind Drive, and then there's a little road, things off until that's Bay Street. Right down Bay Street, just like out here, if you wanna take a look right out here at the window, there's about a foot wide strip of permeable asphalt. And underneath that permeable asphalt is a rock chamber, a rock lane, so to speak. And as long as we back out, the fines in that asphalt once every six months or so, the storm water that goes up again. The stormwater that goes up against the curb drains immediately into the rock chamber. I don't know if anybody recalls wading through the ponds that we used to have in front of the hall. Well, they're gone. So on Bay Street, we cut out eighteen inches, I believe, out of the center of the street because it's an invert. Street, the water flows to the center. Most streets are crowned and the water flows to gutter. But El Centro is the same way. It's an inverted street. And so we cut out the center, put a rock chamber in it, and we put permopaved down the middle. So the water flows into the permopaved down the rock chamber. And if the rock chamber fills up, then it still flows by surface as it's supposed to down the street to the next inlet. But that takes a pretty big rainstorm. These things are designed for the twenty-five-year storm volumetrically to hold that water. I'm I'm really looking forward to bringing this project forward. I know the folks on that street have been, you know, hanging tough for a long time.
But Mike, to go back to this question, it's, you're not answering this question. You mentioned before that the pipes are connected and go underneath Gulf Boulevard and over to Thirty-Sixth. From what I remember. There is no pipe connected that goes up.
Yeah, so the gentleman, the gentleman was correct. The 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 drains on El Centro are not connected. They're French drains.
Correct. So but earlier before that question, you had said that they were connected, that El Centro was connected to the other side.
Well, well, refined. The water that flows off El Centro into the drains on Gulf Boulevard. Are connected to this, to the outlet of Thirty-Sixth.
So Gulf Boulevard is connected.
Gulf Boulevard is connected. Well, it flows off.
You're talking about sheet flow that goes.
Yes. So all that sheet flow from Gulf Boulevard, uh the two drains that are in the Thirty-Sixth and Casablanca intersection are also connected to that. And so.
So if the streets are pitched correctly, then it will, oh my god, oh my god.
Correct. But what we're hoping is that the perm paved and rock chambers that we're going to put in there will take care of all but the most largest of storms. And anything after that would sheet flow down and into the drains on Gulf Boulevard. So that's what we're up to there. And that, ladies and gentlemen, I believe, is the end of the project list that I have.
Yep. And Mike, I'm going to ask, and I'll ask for the neighbors to, I really was hoping to get a project list, not just for for Don Sisar. From what I requested was. Um, because I know there's a second sheet like this. I've received this sheet before. Well, I have two. So, um. The other sheet that I have with this one included Foca Sierra, Lido, and I think I might have shared it, I think, with your meeting. So how long ago was that?
About three months. I was going to actually ask for that document after this. There was like a need over this, we go with the original.
Correct. And that's when I received this particular paper. So and 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 this is just because I'm probably as frustrated as a lot of the rest of them is, um. We 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 need to, we need action and and we need something, um. And, you know. I just never know what the words I could say because I, I don't know if you have the words, but um we have been talking about this for um many years. Um, and and I say we when I talk about the Don Sisar, but now that I've been talking to some of the other neighborhoods within the district. Um, I know there's issues in District One, Two, and I even have some people from Patty Grill, by the way, calling me and I'll find out if it's between these. Fourth and twelfth that you're saying is no problem. Um, but it's a citywide. Problem. Um, and I, you know, when it does come to commission on June eleventh and we've got approvals of money. And this is the first time I'm seeing this, this piece of paper revised. It's revised from the last one. I want to know. Current open projects, the money that was allocated, was it spent? Why is it costing more, you know, um?
There aren't any projects other than what's on that sheet for this neighborhood. That's it.
Well, there's also the the.
Oh, the neighborhoods, I mentioned those.
Correct, and our district's documents. Mike, Mike, actually, things keep changing, right? There's.
They will never stop changing.
They will never stop changing, but the communication has to be there, right? So number one, number nine, why wasn't uh DP or the state? On that outfall number nine, why was it not approved? You know, why?
I have a final design before we can submit it.
Well, from my understanding is it was returned back, right? The approval for that denying, they rejected. So why was rejected? You know, why?
I explained, we went out for the waters of the United States and then we pulled back.
Right. And so we pulled back. So why just not just do a hard seawall? Why, why, why do something that we might risk now being? Pulled back again, right? Said, no, we can't do that either. And so that's a two-month wait for a permit, but can we just go get a seawall and talk about a living shoreline?
Temporary structure will hold for now. But then, but the way that those two outfalls and the sheet flows work. Is the the engineering of what we have is a much better solution for the long-term health of that neighborhood. That's it. We're not going back in the neighborhood until we put a pump station in.
So we need a pump station too.
At some point in time, those to the islands will need pump stations. We're talking about fifty of them.
Right. But the more that we keep plugging, I mean, I'm hearing um what what you're mentioning today, we're in Bogasia. They're going to keep flooding, you know? So, but we shouldn't accept that, you know, because I know how it feels. I can't get out of my house. I gotta check. I gotta check the tides on a daily basis, especially when it's a spring tide, um. Because we have a higher high and we are in a lower line and, you know, piece of land in Don Sisar. Um, and I've lived on many barrier islands and I've never had to check the tides to drive my car. So that's why it's, that's, this is why it's a hot topic because. We've been, I bought in twenty-ten. I've been going to the city since twenty-twelve. Um. We we need action and we need it and we can't, you know, I know we heard at our commission meeting, um. Put the Band-Aids, I think, Kathlees, which is that, Band-Aids and stitches before the major surgery, right? But it, what are the Band-Aids and stitches? Because I don't think they're putting flex valves in baffle boxes. Um, without doing everything else. It's going to solve the problem because then we'll all be sitting here again saying we're still having, um. You know, sunny day floods, you know, so and is that acceptable? So that, you know, I'm trying to get a coordination of stuff going and what it's truly going to cost and where should we start first? Versus spending a lot of Band-Aids and say, well, let's, well, if you guys want us to remove the flex valves, let's remove the flex valves and let it just drain like it used to and be back to where we were. Um, in twenty-ten. Um, so anyways, I. I don't see a plan. So what I think, what's the plan for Don Sisar with step one, two, three, four? This is the best steps that we should be taking. What are the steps for Bogasia? What are the steps for Lido? What is the one, two, three, and four in that order and that and what costs, what should be done?
I can answer that question for you.
Well, I would like.
Plan for your neighborhood is that. And that is as far as it goes until the seawalls privately are elevated and the pump stations go in. And that is the same plan. For every single neighborhood in this city that floods, Bogasia Isle.
So should our focus be walls and pumps?
District One.
For flex valves and baffle boxes? If you're saying that, you're, you ended up saying that the seawalls and and um and the pump station. So should we be focused on getting the seawalls done? And the pump stations or the pumps or the money for the pumps before adding baffle boxes because we're still going to flood?
That is a great, great topic for conversation. And let me just say this in in a larger, you know, thirty-thousand-foot level. As we go through our budget bill in the next week, uh you're going to be seeing it at the commission meeting on the twenty-sixth, I believe, right?
Well, we have workshops tomorrow too.
Okay, great. Um, so. Six years ago. There were, there was no talk. Like this. At this, at this, at this level. With this intensity, but wasn't out there. I wasn't hearing, hey, Mike, you need to figure out a way to stop flooding. You need to figure out how to, that sea level rise. And I was already thinking about it because we all thought the work directors were, but I wasn't being pressed to create. A whole flooding network of projects and programs for the city. Okay, well, now I'm being asked to do that. And this is what it is for this neighborhood. We have plans for all the other neighborhoods that we have advanced so far. Okay, I'll, I'll post those by Friday on the internet. You'll know, there's one per district or maybe a couple, but you'll, you'll see everything I've got. And I'll post it up there on the website. I'm happy to do that. And as we go through this budget. We have in the past few years traditionally transferred from the general fund to the capital fund around four or five million dollars. And what that has done is it has improved our sanitary sewer systems. It has improved our road systems. It has improved. All kinds of infrastructure, the stuff that makes our society work and function properly. Okay? If we now want to add this category called protect me from the flooding water. What money are we going to use? Are we going to take the four thousand dollars from the infrastructure that we're already not, already having a hard time maintaining and keeping up the levels of service? And not do that anymore so we can do flooding projects? Or are we going to create new money? So that we can do these flooding projects? Pump stations are three to four million dollars apiece. This city needs more than thirty. Our problem is a hundred million bucks in the next twenty-five to thirty years. That's our conversation. Yes.
I think we have to have another conversation, a different conversation. It has to be not you. It has to be. Planning board. You want me to elevate your seawall to five foot? I'm not going to do it unless I can backfill behind it. We're not allowed to backfill behind it. That's ordinance that has to change and it needs to be. I think somebody brought up a committee on what are we going to do so that when he wants five-foot seawalls, we can put? Fill behind them in the lots that you have.
We are, we are working on it. We, we agree. Absolutely. You are absolutely correct. And it's the first question we get asked. Are you crazy? I can't elevate. Like, why, what am I going to do? And so all the cities, uh Treasure Island just rolled out their big plan.
I went to the meeting.
Yeah, very interesting. Very interesting. Um, certainly something to consider, but yes, we are looking at Phil and all of that.
Well, this is long already. What we're talking about here is Band-Aids. Longer term, what are we going to do? How many pump stations? What do we elevate the island? Like, P T I is playing.
Elevating the island requires every property as it redevelops over the next one hundred years to come up. You don't have a hundred years.
No, but we see a lot of houses getting knocked out and they're not getting built up. So we're way behind already and we're not helping the situation at all.
If we change the ordinances now, like T I's planning arm. You would get your garages up higher so they don't flood with the street lines.
You're only going to get the houses that are already going to redevelop. There's a lot of folks out there that aren't going to.
We weren't glad to go as high as we wanted to go. We were, we were just going to go up two more feet when we were told though.
Height limitations.
Height limitations, yeah, works both ways.
Has to be changed immediately.
And it's not you.
No, I don't think so.
It's like, keep digging the hole. Let's stop digging.
So that whole conversation is taking place, um, yeah, amongst the the staff. And it is an incredible uh mental challenge to come up with these things. And we actually have a consulting firm helping us out, just like Treasure Island did. Just like St. Petersburg, just like every other city. We, we all have to come up with our plans and we're all doing that simultaneously. Uh, to try to get there. So. Um, I don't know when we're going to be able to roll out our first draft for public comment, um. But it's certainly a great co- great idea to maybe challenge our new city manager with, uh, when she gets here because, uh. Between now and then, I can gather up the information to present where we're at. Uh, and it's not bad. We're not behind the power curve. We're, we're on it.
But we need to get.
But it needs to roll.
It needs to roll like T I was planning the summer, end of the summer. Actually chanting milk for it to just allow backfill and to acquire new houses to be.
I watch it like a hawk.
And uh, I went to their presentation and they're. They're ahead of us as far as doing that. And uh, like you said, he's liking it. We as a community. The city. Not him because he's the, he's works for all the works. We need to do it at the commission, at the planning board so that we can get those things changed.
So how do you deal with the people who don't have any seawalls at all? Because we have several of them. All right. There are no seawalls.
You may.
They probably.
They have mangroves. That's it.
Right.
I go both.
Yeah, me too.
You are describing, you're describing the classic Galloway's approach. So it's all for one or one for all, so to speak. Everybody, everybody elevates regardless of what you have.
So this would be out for the city. You're going to do that.
It's your cost.
And it will be regulated? Everybody has to do that?
That is a great question.
Yeah, that's what I was talking with them.
Yeah.
So, um, just as a chuckle for myself because I thought it was humorous. About six years, five and a half years or so ago, I was chatting with my staff and I said, there will come a day. When the public conversation will begin to take place in a different way. And we will start to see what the threat really is and to our existence. Well, welcome to today. So now I thank you so much, very, very much for that. The challenges are tremendous. And I, I, I'd just like to commend the commissioner uh for just doing this and being challenging and and thinking hard and. And uh, we're going to be having this conversation for years. There's no fast, easy solution to this, but we've got to grind our way through it. Uh, all the things that we think we know. And then as we begin to talk more, we're going to learn more about what we don't know. And then when we know that, it's going to change what we think we know. We're going to go through that iteration process again and we watch what the other cities are doing. And whether or not they're succeeding or failing. And uh, and and we just roll that as a community and if the, it's a planning board is the focus point for where that conversation of is uh emanates from. That's a, that's a great idea for the commissioners to wrestle with. But as you said. I'm just the guy that builds stuff. And so for right now, the best I can do is build what I can as fast as I can. In order to put, put something out there to, to prevent the sunny day flooding and the high tides and the occasional ten-year, twenty-year storm. But once it comes over the walls. And that's it. We're done.
Okay, you were talking about a five-foot. Seawalls being built to five feet, is that, yeah, what grade levels that be built?
That's a great question and one that, uh.
Can't even.
So the National. American Vertical Datum of nineteen eighty-eight. So Canada and America and Mexico got together and said, okay, guys. You know, over the course of time, from the fifteen hundreds until now, there's been various datums out there, nineteen twenty-nine. Whatever. We all need to figure out where zero is. And so N A B D A sets a zero for everybody. Doesn't matter if you're in California. Or in Cancun, or in Vancouver, zero is zero. Now, where is it? As we stand right here, it's probably about two and a half feet underneath, uh, three feet underneath the asphalt outside. And from there, we come up five feet. Why five feet? Okay. A couple, three years ago, for um, the community, all the engineers and the planners and the, and the uh. Marine experts and NOAA and all three-letter agencies and state and federal governments, we all. Hold up basically and said, given the, given the scenarios of where sea level rise is going. Given the rate of global warming, which adds water to the oceans. Uh, you know, given all this carbon dioxide talk, you can believe the science or not. I'm not going to argue that. I'm just going to tell you that everybody I know tells me one thing. The water is different now than it was ten years ago. So however you want to believe that's happening, it's not going to stop happening. It's going to get worse. And it's going to get worse exponentially. In other words, it's going to get deeper faster. It's like your bank account. You're earning, earning interest on dividend interest. Yeah, that's, that's how this is working. Yeah. Um, and so you take a look at those curves. In the year twenty fifty, fifty-five, sixty. I don't know about you, but I'm a little worried. And that's not very far away. Our grandchildren, if they choose to stay here on the island, are going to live through our decisions. And I take that very seriously. And so I am just so, so pleased that the commissioner was able to get this conversation going. And I think your leadership while moving forward and asking for the plan is absolutely, uh, we're heading in the right direction with your leadership. And I appreciate that so much. Yes, sir.
I have a question. So for these projects with the seawalls and the pump stations, could you factor in? Um, the cost of having a staff to maintain them because pumps and. You know, baffle boxes. All that stuff. I'm a civil engineer, so I've done stormwater and all the things that.
Sure, yeah, great question.
If we don't have. That's going to require long maintenance, then maybe just all the check valves, I mean. So I just wondered if you could include that in your. Your scope. Your design. Second question is. Is storm surge accounted for when you design the seawalls or not? Like, we're trying to figure out where to put it.
Sure, yeah. Great, great, great questions both. And so in case you didn't hear it back, the first question was about maintenance. Uh, are we incorporating our maintenance practices into the designs? Uh, the answer is yes, but we have an operations budget, uh, that is where the guy is in the gear and the trucks and the back hoses and all that sits. We right now have two stormwater uh maintenance workers. Both of them are very good. Uh, but we supplement what they are. Uh, but we supplement what their capability is with contracts, and so we hire a contractor to maintain the baffle boxes on a yearly basis. Um. And so we do, we do think about the maintenance costs and I have to put that into the operations budget. Uh, tools and equipment and supplies and fuel and trucks and gas and all that stuff, um. And that number is not going down, that, that number is going up, and so, uh, we're going to be requesting the staff be doubled. Over the next couple of years. We're going to be requesting that, that staff double. Um, on, on, on the other utility system that keeps me, uh, uh, on my toes is the sanitary sewer system. Same situation. We have two people to maintain our entire sanitary sewer system of twenty-three lift and pump stations. If you don't think that's a dangerous position to be in, come see me and I will change your mind. So we're requesting staff double up to four, and I'm getting ready to lose a guy, I, I hope I don't, but it's possible. Um, so the maintenance posture of the city is tenuous at best, we're. I'm very proud, along with Parks and Recreation and the other departments, that we're able to maintain the level of service that we have. This is not a bad place, I went up to my old hometown of Davenport, Iowa. I needed, I needed new shock absorbers after a couple of days. So we're, we're riding pretty good for what we got. But we're facing an existential threat. And so we, uh, again, we, we need to get our act together and start getting this conversation moving.
Second part of this question, the storm surge?
Storm surge, no, um, so interesting, storm surge, does anybody, does anybody actually understand it when the, when the weather, no, not you. When the weather forecaster says three to five feet of storm surge. So. What, what is that, what, is that from being high, high, being low, high, high to high to high to low or where, I don't know? And so at the last public work director's meeting, I said, come on, you're killing me with all these definitions, nobody knows what they mean. Tell me what the storm surge is in N A D D eighty-eight. I know my seawall cap is at three feet, and if you tell me storm surge is at four, I know I got one foot of water coming over the wall. Make it simple, so I'm hoping that that's where we're going to go. And, uh, so storm surge was not something that, we, we can't control it, it's, it's storm driven. You know, mother nature's going to do what she's going to do, we're going to protect up to the twenty-five year, twenty-four hour storm as best as we can, and after that, it's called, it's called, uh, evacuation.
Even T I, if you have, if you have a hurricane, just wipe everything out and you come back.
Yeah, for ten to four buyers, you know. What, what we're talking about is trying to maintain levels of service for that, which is. Normal, if that's even a word I can use. So I had some questions in the back, yes, sir.
Uh, is the city pursuing, uh, funds for stormwater mitigation funding?
So FEMA provides money in a variety of ways, some of it's post-storm, and we're going after that, we always do. And some of it's mitigation, which is hardening up, um. That which we have, and we're doing that also, so. Uh, we're looking at mitigation measures at the Warren Webster Building, uh. Don't know if that'll survive or not. Um. We're looking at mitigation measures when we build the new June walkovers at Fourth and Sixth and Seventh Avenue. Uh, we're looking at mitigation measures and those measures include, like, can the piles be, uh, wide on thicker diameter? Can we, uh, make the spacing a little bit tighter, can we use additional straps and fasteners, can we do lateral loading, can we do vertical, uh? Horizontal loading? Yeah, can we, can we make the structure more robust and FEMA? When they see the plans, uh, they have some possible limitations and whatnot, uh, so we're working through hardening up those structures where we can. Fisherman Park, uh, Fisherman Park and, uh, the other park next to it, Sunset Park, we're looking at hardening those.
And they have off the seawalls?
I have not seen a program that FEMA will step in, uh, for a private land seawall. I've, I've never heard of one, and I just want to mention in general. The grant programs that you're seeing rolling out of Washington DC. Are all starting to have some very interesting, uh, words, some interesting clauses. If you read very closely. They're talking about disadvantaged neighborhoods. Where's the disadvantaged neighborhood in St. Pete Beach?
The one in the floor.
We, no, sorry. There isn't one. So as I compete for these grants, I'm competing against Tampa and St. Petersburg and others that truly do have disadvantaged neighborhoods. And so I'm not telling you that I'm not going to fight the good fight to get other people's money. But I'm not holding out any hope that we're going to get a, a lot of it.
My couple of resiliency funds that the governor was missing. For state Florida, uh, I know you mentioned, I think, at the commission meeting, you were tapping into that for certain things, but. Uh, and there's a deadline of September or something of this year to leverage that, um, you know, that's that amount of money, uh. Doesn't sound like it was for disadvantaged and. I'm just thinking about what you're stating, which is. Yes. We need seawalls. I don't know if that has to do with anything that we can be grant ready for. Yes, we need pump stations, and I know your point of view is they're worthless without the seawalls, but I would say not. You still need them. They'll move the water out faster, even though we're still going to get flooded, but we'll need them once the seawall.
I, I gotta shut you down on that one, I'm sorry. You cannot put a pump in against an open head. But what that means is. If the pump doesn't, if the water that the pump is pumping. Is not contained. Like your bathtub. If you want to put a pump in your bathtub and push it out the window, that's, that water's contained, if it's against an open head. In other words, if your water faucet is on full blast. And you think you're pumping that bathtub water over the window is going to help. It's not, the ocean is much bigger than we are.
Oh, yeah, I'm not saying that, but at some point a pump adds value when things subside and it moves the water out faster, so it's not sitting in our.
When it, when it's in and it's doing what it's supposed to be doing, we have a pump station, it's working very nicely, it's down on fourth avenue.
You just need like thirty or forty more?
Uh, yeah, that's, that's just the number that I'm grabbing out of the air based on my experience for now, that, that number's going to change.
Get money for on that resiliency fund for now, since we know we need to get things in place.
Nobody's going to, no, nobody's going to give us a grant for a pump station that's not protected and will function properly. So. But we got to put the cart before the horse, or at least get them simultaneously pulling together. And so that would be my hope, is that as we see that we are protecting the neighborhood with the seawall issue and it's contained and protected. Then two years before that happens, uh, we need to be in design for the pump station, and I'd go for grants at that point.
So just to be clear. There is no pursuit of any of these solutions until all the seawalls are up to five foot. Within two years of that being done, we won't invest in any other infrastructure.
That's not my decision to make.
Okay, I just wanted to understand what you just made a statement of.
Doesn't make any sense and from an engineering perspective, but it's not my decision to make, if I'm asked to install infrastructure, that's, I'm, I'm going to do that. But I think we should use our money wisely.
I'm trying to develop a plan for increasing the seawall, now I have a waterfront property and a back seawall, and I have not heard anything about, you know, doing that. I won't build mine, if they're not going to all be built together.
And, and, and so that is a great. Statement. That is shared by. Virtually everybody. Like, who's first? You know, I'm not going to do that until I have to.
Well, that's exactly.
Well, I know.
When you heard about five feet and I was putting the dock, fortunately, planning, let me put my dock at five feet. Because that was what their plan at the time was, if they were going to. See if I'll be able to do that, and the code at the time was four point one feet or something. And they allowed me to do that, and similar to what they're talking about, I don't want a garage. Bottom of my garage to be below five, not be eighty-eight or whatever that thing is, because otherwise it's going to go to do that. And I can't really do that because my neighbors are going to get flooded. If I rebuild my house, my neighbors can't.
And that's the trick with the discussion about the fill, yes.
And so I need a way to be able to build my garage highway, get into it, but then have the rest of my house sort of supported or somehow until everybody builds up and then I can do my.
Right, you're not sort of, uh. Yeah, your description of that's, of your situation is, is, is great, because it's, it's shared by virtually everybody. And so that's the conversation, the gentleman was talking about, you know, the codes and the fill and all the, all the. All the restrictions or the, uh, you know, um, ways that we have to comply with. That all needs to be challenged with a set of fresh eyes, because when that stuff was written, when we were younger. It's not applicable to what we're facing. And so, and it's, it's a big effort, I don't know if anybody in here is actually trying to rewrite code. Uh, with the thought in mind that I have to think about the future, that I, that is uncertain. That's a daunting task, uh, but. I think we need to take it on, it's, you know, we need to, and there's several things that have to move parallel to each other. So. Uh, so all your points are all correct, they're all great. And it's all, all. Action items that need to be a little bit of fire going, so that we're moving through, moving in the staff in the right direction. And we can take that challenge and we can figure out how to do this, it'll probably require some outside consulting help. But there's nothing wrong with that. Because the interesting thing about consultants is we're not their only clients, we get their knowledge based on what they're seeing with their other thirty or forty clients. And so there's some benefits to that.
And so that part, so you're saying we have five-foot seawalls. I know how the code works in terms of the height that they're talking about, that you can build up either eight feet above your ground level or eight feet above your design flood elevation, whichever is higher. Maybe that should really be at the five-foot M A B D is the minimum of where your. You know, elevation is, so that at least everybody starts from at least that point and you weren't making themselves a puzzle.
And that is.
Only the code review, you can be done.
And that's exactly where we should be when we, when we get the organizational structure in place to begins to control this conversation, move it forward with a certain purpose.
But this exists right now for people who will be building, so this is something that we should be waiting, ready for the planning, we have a five-foot set right now that we've all, that's been determined. And that should be, and we go to sixty to re-trigger it again, but that should now be something that's looked at immediately by whoever develops the code. For us and then, and it's, somebody has to be, you know, I'm sure there's a feedback through the planning and everybody else, I don't know who creates code, whether it's planning.
It's, it's planning. Um, it's planning and everybody, you know, applicable and challenging, but you just said something that everybody needs to, to hear. You said five feet or six feet when the time comes.
Yeah.
Did you catch it?
I didn't.
When I talked about that exponential sea level rise curve. There's a point in the future where five feet's not good enough. And the question then becomes. How high is the next phase and do we, do we start to look like New Orleans?
I think we, we, I think we spend so much time thinking about too much that we lose sight of getting to something done.
So everything.
We're so worried about thirty, twenty years, let's focus on, we know the seawall needs to go up, let's just go forward, you know, and, and in thirty years, seawalls, seawalls aren't made to be, you know, last for a hundred years. Let's hit the seawall and. You know, I think there's a fight, I don't know, I don't know if it's the city's intention to try to take private homeowner's property and, and. I don't know what it is, but you, it seems like neglect, because you went ahead and figured out a way to do number nine, you said the city owns it. Well, we need a plan. And trust me, I've talked to several waterfront property owners, a lot of them, they'll, they'll pay their money out of pocket. I'm not willing to take money that's free to put mangroves and do some living seawall, I'm not willing to do that, I'll pay for my regular seawall, just like everybody else is putting them. I don't see anybody else putting up mangroves, I don't want to be an experiment, I don't need to be ahead of the curve, I just need to do. You know, what it's going to take. To, to, to work for twenty, whatever, years, and, and I think we're kind of overthinking things, a- and. And we're not really just moving forward, for example, we can't even do the seawall until we can backfill it. So step one, let's do it, let's go. Then we can do, and the seawall, the other thing too, is we can't just do one seawall at a time, that has to all be done. I haven't had any money from the city in any four or five years come and knock on my door, you are a person that lives on the water. We're going to have to work together, not, not, we're going to have to work together, this is going to have to happen, nobody's doing that.
You just think.
Right now.
No, no, this is. Is every waterfront property owner here?
Well, but this is the beginning. And then just, I, I'd just like to go ahead and address. The living shoreline seawall thing, and it's new, it's about, you know, it's like, oh, what the heck is all that about? So look at it this way. A structure made by man. Mother nature will defeat it at some point in time, it will fail. This structure that is mother nature doesn't fail, it can be reinforced. Okay, so that's the, that's the basic concept of a living shoreline. We're using mother nature to protect us against herself.
So your goal is trying to manipulate mother nature?
No, I'm trying to, I'm trying to. No, not manipulate, well, you, you call it manipulation, I call it adaptation. I'm taking that which mother nature tells me works. And I'm using it to our advantage, and that's what all the other scientists are all doing, and that's what the Private Living Shoreline Ecosphere Restoration Project is all about. It's a big experiment, I agree with you, and we'll see what it, we'll see what it comes up with.
So it's the, so the, the check valve, that was an experiment and then failed, and that's, I'm saying, if I'm paying for it. I'm not going to be an experiment, I don't want free, it's not free, you know, you're, to me, if you're selling just. You're just owning a whole can of worms.
Well, the.
Mangroves, next thing you know, you've got some bird that came and nest. Now you, now you can't get within so many feet of that, you, you just don't know what you're opening up, there's, it hasn't been proven, we know that there's seawalls. They're putting them up every day and they function just fine.
There's two sides, there's two, two sides of the conversation, sir, you know, we need to explore all options until one set, one tells us is better than the other, so I'm just leaving it that.
My question on a really important point over earlier, with your comment, you said. We need to get an organized effort around this, right? I, I heard you say that a few minutes ago.
Yeah, that's.
Talk about like. Yes, we do, how do we, and can we have a couple of community people partnering with like the smart? Engineers and designers and co-developers and, 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 and finance people to help.
Well, so, so we're talking about basic governance here, okay, so. Basic governance starts with policy. What is it that the government is being asked to do by its citizens that are being served? And that policy comes through our elected officials. Okay, so this conversation. About what we're supposed to do, what direction do we take, and what, you know. Uh, what's, what do you want, where do we want to go? That's a policy discussion that our elected officials, advised by experts, of course. Need to engage in so that the staff is given the direction. Uh, by, by our elected officials on behalf of you and me. As to where we want to go as a community and where, what do we want to achieve and what's our timeline look like? And then we can talk about money too. But. Policy in our democracy is, is, is worked through our elected officials as we tell them what we want. As you tell Betty. This is what we're looking for, you know, so, so that, I, so I, that's not my realm, I'm the action guy. I sling concrete and hang out on rebar and that's what I do, but.
Policy in that concrete, you should also be, since you know so much about it, be considering what other effects are there going to be? For example, building the codes that will have to be modified, things like that, and the, the commission isn't necessarily going to know that, they're, you're sort of the in-house experts. That know, hey, this is an effect and we should.
That was, that was the part that I said. The, our, our elected officials, as they said, policy with the advice of experts. Not just me, but a whole bunch of experts, we got Jennifer's an expert, Christian's an expert. Adam's an expert, we have consultants that are even smarter than we are with more experience, we bring those folks in, we have this grant conversation based on. Policy direction that our elected officials. Will take us to based on. Their input from their constituents, but, but, yeah.
Mike, can you just, because I, I really want to talk about those, that's already, we've been going for a while, are you, are you going to talk about a future project, are you done? So that we can.
Uh, I'm done, I, yeah, I'm, I think, uh, we've covered everything that I have that's available, um, I will. Work on the rest of the, um. Areas that we have projects going, so in the near future, you can expect to see a, a map like this up on our website. Uh, pretty much all the neighborhoods, so, cool. Thank you very much for all of that conversation.
Well, questions?
Well, yeah.
Questions? How many engineering firms we have working on this?
How many engineering firms have we had working, uh, on this, uh, in the last eight years, I can count about ten.
Ten? Okay, I have, I have a solution. I'm an engineer, but I have a solution that may work in the infirm before we do all this other stuff. Uh, what about the underground, uh, water vaults? Are we discussing that at all?
They are a fantastic tool and right place, and I'll tell you. Uh, the right place to be a parking lot. Uh, or some other confined area that. You measure the volume of water from a certain random that we call the twenty-four hour, twenty-five year storm. You can measure the volume of water that will fall in cubic meters. And then you can size a vaulted structure underneath the road, underneath the parking lot to contain that water, so it, it holds and sinks down. Just like a wood on a sand beach.
So.
That's actually being done, planned for on this island now.
So if we had water vaults on the island. Where the water would drain into the vault for the pumping station. Cross the way from, pumping the water back out into the bay, that will alleviate the water from coming into all the homes around the ground. On the inner side of, uh.
Not, not till it puts the seawalls to see.
But even if it's a water, it's a seawall, the water's going to run up to the streets.
Probably gets it up ahead. This is somewhere.
Why don't they?
Because it's physics.
All right, I'm pregnant for a few months, it's like. Yeah, so, um, did you wanna finish one, one thing before? Cause I wanna be able to take. I wanna be able to get some of, of, from what Mike has been talking about, um. Thinking forward, um, what, what you feel, what I feel, or what. What everyone has gathered as what should. Our elected official completely be pushing forward, right? Because, um. We did this, and I remember when they did the nav, the nav file for the seawalls, and that was. Year and a half ago, wasn't it? Two, two, three years ago, right? Um, and that was quite frustrating, uh, for me personally, listening to it. Because all these questions you all are saying, I asked, you know, how can we do that? We don't have backfill. And then how, how were some of the? The homes that people put up seawalls did not go to the five map, if it's important. Um, which is still an outstanding question for, for me. Um, so what type of policy decisions, and you don't have to answer it now. So it's something you can write. I have my, my card up front, I have my email, my, my phone number. Just to jot your ideas down and from your neighborhood as to what the city should be tasked. To get, to get moving forward. Because I don't want to be talking about this. Repeatedly without action, right? We, we've talked about the five map and as a matter of fact, and Mike and I have heard this. But, um, the city of Man Beach has a five point six or five point seven now currently. So it's already above the five map. Um, so this is sinking. Pardon? So what's the city of sinking? Right, this is my beach, but, but they've already changed, you know, there, I never know, there's other cities that are doing the same, the same thing. So that. Because time keeps ticking, right? So. Like I said, I came here in twenty-ten, twenty-fourteen, we're talking about the same exact things. We did an ordinance change on the seawall, but we didn't do the backfill. People are building homes, people are moving from our estate. They're not familiar with the area of the island. Um, so then they're confronted with issues. They call me, they say, well, why is this and why not that? So there's a disconnect. Um, there's a disconnect in, um, you know. We, we, Mike mentioned earlier. We don't currently have the staff or the commitments for our current situation on flex valves. So we're gonna ask for more staff. And then I heard the question, well, what about these new systems? The backflow. Or you're probably gonna need way more staff. Because not only are we maintaining flex valves, but now we're also gonna be maintaining backflow boxes because we're not gonna do them all at the same time, right? So, so does that mean we need triple the staff? Right, and the equipment to maintain two different types of systems. So, you know, I have still a lot of questions myself that I wrote down a lot of bills. Just because, um, we are, we are coming to a budget, but, uh, you know, it's. You know, we want a resiliency committee, you know, for the city.
I think the, the resiliency committee should include people from the community. And, uh, I'm an engineer, I know there aren't any engineers around that could help. And help with the discussion. And, uh, I know Mike, sounds like he's already had people working on this stuff. We need to get that and get it in front of people. And, uh, and he's not the only guy that should be doing it. I mean, he needs help. He's got a lot of stuff going on. It should be plenty more working on it along with a committee that wanna have a group of people get together. That's what has to happen to move forward. If you don't do that, he's filed up with work. He doesn't have twenty-four hours in a day that he can do it. He needs help and having a committee work with him and progressive. And help out the commission.
And the discussion has been going on for probably twenty years. Absolutely. So, absolutely. It's a long, it's a long talking. Yeah, right. I, I think even a better word than committee is a task force. I think the cross-functional task force, including like you said, sort of the, the, uh, you know, community. What all that talent that we have. And then absolutely, we need to sort out a very executable plan for seawalls. Right? I think that's just everyone, I don't know, everybody will disagree. I would say at least the people in this group feel like they would agree with seawall. Making it a reality ought to just be the mantra. And I don't know how long that needs to go on, but I really think we could get very clear of some. Dedicated team focused on this to get some milestones done in the first ninety days and start spinning out some real results, like. Phil, for example, it sounds like, I don't know, that's holding people back, you know? So just some simple things like that. But that would just be one thought. I'll just finish really quick and you guys can jump in. And I, I do think that we, you know, hearing Mike talk, it's. We still need the right hat, band-aid and stitches, right? And so the maintenance teams or the. Ability to execute on making what we have. Keep us, uh, I shouldn't say blow up. You know what I mean? I, I would say that that is a critical thing that we ought to support. And then lastly, and look at this budget season, I, I guess I'm hearing as well that, you know, there's. Important funds that get set into buckets for, say. Sewer or whatnot. We need a resiliency fund of money, you know, of the eighty-five million dollars in our budget. From this past year. I don't know, but I'm guessing it's more gonna be for the next fiscal year. How do we set aside dollars that allow us to actually move somebody's things forward fast? I don't want to see those. Is there someone on that side? I, I know I've said this before and other people have said it, but it is unacceptable. That, that none of the bed tax, especially as we're slowly getting more hotel rooms. It is unacceptable that we don't get a cut of that money. It should be used for resiliency so people can come to the beach. And I just, I don't know how we get a group together and march on. You know, Pinellas County and wherever. Well, but we need to, I don't care. I'll go up to Tallahassee. I mean. We have got to get out of the mindset that we're a victim. And we have got to take these things on. I'm not a victim. I refuse to be a victim. Yes, yes.
Yeah, uh, to your point, um, the little city of St. Pete Beach generated. It was either a hundred and five or a hundred and eight million dollars in fat tax. That's a hundred and, hundred and some odd million dollars. The law, the way it's written states that. That hundred and some odd million dollars is available or grants things for, wait for it. Attracting more tourists in the area. And nothing else. So I think from a policy point of view. Mike, Mike sounds like a nice guy. He sounds so smart. I think he's probably a nice guy, but you, the city has no credibility. And it's because all of us have been the redheaded stepchild here for years and been told that this is going on and this is gonna happen. Well, we tried this and this doesn't work. And for me, I'm not sure if I believe any of what he said. I'm sure he's right, but I'm skeptical. And I think from a policy point of view, the commission and the city has to ask. Who's your priority? Is it tourism? Is it tourists or is it us?
Tourists.
And until someone says it's us, um, the city doesn't have the money for this stuff. And unless we figure out a way to get the money from somewhere else. Um, it's, it's not gonna happen in a fashion that's gonna be satisfactory to anybody sitting in this room. And we're gonna keep patching it and saying it didn't work. And we're gonna continue to have problems. Um, and maybe the bad tax is untouchable because of state law. But I can tell you this, our, our representative wouldn't, wouldn't see me and talk to me about the. The issue of trying to get more money for the city for infrastructure and for quality of life for us. So I don't know if it's a question of putting a resiliency tax on the hotels. That I would love to see. And I know the city doesn't have the authority to, to tax. But there's gotta be some way to skin that cap. And until we skin that cap. We're gonna end up with. You're gonna go through a budget season. We're gonna figure out that you have. Maybe half of what you need to do what needs to be done. And then you're gonna have to decide, you know, who gets fed and who doesn't. And, uh, the property taxes for these towns. Yeah, I, uh, you know, I'm gonna dig into smaller numbers, but it's, uh, you, you know how I feel because they've.
Let's egg weigh in. All right, so we'll, uh, try to wrap this up. I just, on here is just some upcoming meetings just to make sure you guys are aware of. Mike mentioned, we have a boat ramp for the John Sazar. Neighborhood, um, or the John Sazar Boat Ramp Meeting next Wednesday at six o'clock at Community Center. So if you're interested in having input in that and hear from, um. Those that, that was involved in the brand and the engineering firm that did it as well as, um, our public work crew. They will be there to answer questions regarding that and the options that are available. For that, um, we also have a, um, joint workshop with our beach stewardship. Committee as well as the commission on June fourth at one o'clock regarding some of the beach ordinance changes that. We've been working on for, for about two years, but we're now finally trying to, to get this over the finish line. Uh, so that'll be on June fourth. Um, I think those are some of the big meetings. We have a commission meeting, obviously, on Tuesday night. Um, some upcoming events to be aware of is we have, um, the first weekend of June, June first and second. Arts and craft show right here on Cory Avenue, but of course, Sunday. Every Sunday here on Cory Avenue as well. On June first, we also have the hurricane expo that is gonna be at the community center. That's from ten to noon. Uh, we've got a lot of vendors, um. That will be at, um, that expo. We have chief meteorologist from Channel Eight. Jeff Paradelli will also be there, um, to kind of do a presentation and to answer any questions about the upcoming season. Um, for everybody here, and I know some of you, I saw last night, so I'm sorry for the repeat, but. Um, Eden Park, we have sand and we have bags available year round. This isn't just starting hurricane season, it's year round. Obviously, when a storm is, is coming and. We're getting storms that are outside the hurricane season. We order additional sand and try to push it out with our communication. Mark Orpital right here, who's been doing our Zoom, is our communication manager, um. Our weekly newsletter, if you haven't signed up for it on the website, I highly recommend you do it because that's how you're gonna find out the. Upcoming meetings and everything, kind of what we're going through here and any updates that come from that. Um, so I do invite you for that. Your reentry tags. If you have them from past years, they're still good. If you have, you don't have them, please get them, um, before we enter hurricane season and not the day before we're doing an evacuation. So you can pick them up here and you can pick them up at the two fire stations, um, to get those. Um, to, to be ready, um, to come back on after evacuation.
They're just gonna actually close the bridges and then. Use the reentry process, cause in the past, they, it's, it's all nothing. They close it and then they open it there.
And we, we experienced that last year even beginning on. I had to show my city badge to get on here after Adalia. And no one else could reenter. Coming off of the bridges. So yes, they do.
With your city badge, Mike.
No, you have to have the reentry. And it's not until the county releases for us to reenter onto the beaches. So.
I think what Jim might be referencing though, John, is that, um. It's opened up too soon. Because they do have it, as I've seen it happen. But in some of the neighborhoods and especially in these that I've been talking right now, they're flooded still, right? Our water has not receded. And then kind of like what we mentioned at the commission meeting, that we need the no-wake zones. Um, for our streets because people are joyriding to see what happened in our city.
We so, we try to make that determination. Obviously, we get criticized if we do it too late, too soon. People wanna get back on. But we have to do a safety check along with, like Adam had left from the fire department. Fire, sheriff and city staff along with local works, uh, and our streets crew. We go out and check the whole entire island. We check downlines, we check down trees, we try to clear streets, we check how hot, hot. By the flooding is, we have to do our FEMA reports. So last year at Adalia, we were. Getting criticized because we hadn't opened early enough. Because people were anxious to get back to their homes to find out what the situation was. So, yes, we do it and it's, it's. There's, there's, there's a check through that we have to do before we can allow people back up.
And it is. When it opened, it opened not only to residents, but it opened to.
And it was a combination of all our, our beaches. So it was, we work for Treasure Island, we work with Midyear, we work. Together because if you remember at Adalia, we had sand in the middle of our streets. It looked like. But it, when it opens up.
Right, can it be opened in phases though? Residents for a couple of days before it's let out to general public. You just open it and then everybody comes and then, I mean, we're still flooded and then waves are rushing up. I mean.
It's a security thing.
Sounds like some people can't get into their homes and their homes, yeah.
There are the laws involved in, in all of that. And no matter what we did, we probably won't.
But, but, but just again, back to the point. Let's take what they're saying into consideration.
No, I understand.
Because that, because it is a problem, you know. I know both of us experienced it, you know, we cleaned out our garage and then everybody's coming in and now we gotta re-clean our garage because. Everything went floating away and then we have stuff all over on the, on the streets and it is a security problem. Uh, because, you know, we're trying to protect our property and, um. You know, people are kayaking and paddleboarding down the street, listening, you know, and, and so it, it's a problem. I want, I wanna make sure that we're saying yes. Let's have a meeting as a staff and take into consideration what we're saying. No one's gonna be happy, I know for sure, whatever's taken from here, someone's gonna complain. But this has happened several times throughout.
So it's not just with staff, it would be with the sheriff's office, it would be with the mayor's office, it would be everybody. That's all the stakeholders involved in making those decisions in our county.
Yes, absolutely.
And every storm is different. So. And the TV stations share that information. Um, and then, um, Fourth of July. Fireworks will be on the Fourth of July. They will be from the east end of Cory. Our two viewing areas will be Corina Park where the best stuff and else. Will be doing, um. You know, wine sale, that their fundraiser, and they will also be doing their, um, uh. Oh, their recruits, they're, they'd be swearing then at, oh, suddenly at some. Point during that, and I leave that to the start of sex music starts at seven, it's a.
Boston Sticks.
Boston and Sticks fan tribute that will be performing. Cory Avenue will also be closing the street down, um, to do a view, a viewing party there as well. Um, so advantage of it for live close, you can probably hopefully watch it from your house as well. I think it's a twenty-seven minute show that will be going on. Um, so that will be on July fourth. Last year, I believe we did not July second. On the Fourth of July. So if nothing come out and support the vets, um. One of our main organizers with that group recently cast away. So also, if you're willing to volunteer and help them. Um. They are, um. There's not a lot of volunteers within the organization. That are younger to help carry all the stuff they need to pack. So if you or any of your neighbors are willing to put in an hour. I would just strongly urge that and if you need their contact information, I will give that to you, um, to help out. We, we try the best, but I, I. I witness where they're doing too much work when they should do too much work. So. Um. So those are the, the upcoming events and meetings, um, that are, uh, important coming up. Um, now, the very end, the finale. I'm gonna be Betsinda. Does anybody know who Betsinda is? So it's the library, yay. She gave me a script. Summer begins, uh, both for, um, recreation and for the library. Summer begins, uh, both for, um, recreation and for the library, um, the week after Memorial Day, if you got. And third is when we have reading programs beginning, come get goodie bags for the kids and start your own adventure, which. And there's coloring pages, there's adventures, there's stickers and all kinds of stuff, which I'll leave up here if you want to see, but there's also a schedule back there. To take on your way out, um, they also have to have, they want seabird, um, seaside seabird sanctuary, sea turtle tracks in the big red bus visiting the library in June along with the princess and the magician, oh my. Um, New York Times, Wall Street Journal newspapers are available online with your library card. Um, we show, um, hot new movies and gift free popcorn, you don't even have to sneak in your favorite snacks. Every Saturday, your family can play with their interactive beam projector, let's get those kids jumping. Storytime every Tuesday, but a special one with a firefighter and a touch of truck on June eighth, so mark your calendars, we have visit with the mayor on Monday before every commission meeting, come on in, woo, woo. Also, just so you know, and I don't think everybody knows, um. Benny, you play pickleball, you can actually check out pickleball kits, you can check out puzzles, you can check out CDs, audiobooks, um.
Ukulele.
Ukulele, they have, they have things that you check out that aren't related that you wouldn't think you would get at the library. Um, and they also have museum passes, so if you wanted to go to the valley, if you wanted to. Yes. Was, come on into the library and it's free, so.
What time was it going to be?
Boy, you're putting me on the spot. What was on your list? June eighteen. Oh, eighteen. Uh, firefighter storytime, touch of truck at ten a.m. And if you wanna stick around, jigsaw puzzle competitions that we want. They do a great job at our library, I have to say. Yeah, and, and if you don't know, um. They started sensory playtime for, um, kids on the spectrum, we can see adults on the spectrum and that, and doing that. Uh, lowering the lights and doing a couple of things to incorporate that, so we're doing some great things. Also, who's doing a great thing, that's right, the Recreation Center. So, summer camp, uh, we are full, we're at the waitlist, um, we, um, have a great, um, childcare director, we just honored some kids from this year's aftercare. Um, so that starts also on June third and, um, to stay full this summer. Our aquatic center, it's got a great little pool over there, we've got some great aquatic closets, swims and laps are just, you know, cool off. Uh, very inexpensive to go there, so you can check that out as well. Try to get out of there. So, I will check clockwork, because I don't even know, alright, I'm not too bad. I'm gonna thank Betty. Uh, you guys got a straight commissioner for your district, so, um, also. I'm available anytime, so if you wanna go in-depth at any of these things that we discussed, please get ahold of me, I'm always available. City manager starts July eighth, Fran Robaselli. Um, very excited to have her start, yes, um. We got a woman. Sorry, guys. So, thank you guys for coming.